Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is approval of the agenda for the day.
I have approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of minutes for the January 20th and 27th, 2015 minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Right.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Improvement, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. And the first item is recommendation for reappointments to the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board. Dara Lee, come on up, Dara. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dara.
Thank you for having me today. I have two items actually for today's agenda, and the first is the reappointment of two of the seven commissioners that are currently on the Clay County HRA board. And the second is just an update on our program, since tomorrow is the 40th anniversary of the HRA. And we try and come and talk to you guys a couple of times a year just to let you know what's going on, and figured that might be an appropriate time to do so. But the first item is that we are requesting, at the recommendation of the Clay County HRA Board of Commissioners, that both Cecil Johnson and Zadustoski be reappointed to five-year terms with the HRA board. This would be Mr. Johnson's second five-year term, and it would be Mr. Doski's first full five-year term, because he completed the term of a person who wasn't able to complete their term when they moved to Fargo.
Okay. Any questions for Dara on this?
Do people, how do you get on this board? Do people run for it? Do you get appointed?
They're appointed by the Clay County Commission. We have advertised in the past and solicited interested parties, of which there are few. There are two requirements that we have for people who must be on our board, and one is a tenant representative, and the second, and it could be the same person, but somebody who's experienced homelessness in the past, and that's due to some of our funding resources. Mr. Doski represents that tenant position on our board currently. And when he was first recommended to replace the person who vacated her position, Joanne Blake, we did contact all of our eligible tenants under the Housing Choice voucher and the public housing program, and then interviewed, the Clay County HRA board interviewed potential candidates, and then made that recommendation to this commission.
Were you done, Frank?
Yeah. The, when you know you have interested parties in this case, you're, we're reappointing,
do you still let the public know that there's?
We did not this time, no.
Okay.
That has not been a past practice.
I just think in the future that might still be something good to do. We do it, we do it on our watersheds when we appoint watershed people, but still when they come up, we, we ask if there's other any, other interested parties.
And we would certainly welcome any other interested parties.
Sure, I know you would, yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's why I was wanting to get on, because I wasn't aware of.
Yeah, we've advertised twice since I've come on as the director, and nobody applied through those advertisements, and we had to go out and solicit.
Very good.
Yeah. But, once again, if anybody's watching who has a future interest in serving on the Clay County HRA board, and they just, they need to be a resident of Clay County, we'd be more than happy to include them on a list for future appointments.
I'd move the appointment of Cecil Johnson and service Doski.
Second. Motion in a second to reappoint. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, as I said, and this, not a lot of folks are real familiar with housing and redevelopment authorities, so I promise I'll be done within my 10 minutes, but I'll give you a brief tour of your history.
I think it's, it'll be good for Jenny to hear too.
Yes. In the state of Minnesota, housing and redevelopment authorities can be created pursuant to statute. And they can be created by local city units of government or county units of government. If a city housing authority has been created, it can remain in existence even if after that fact, a county housing authority is created. If a county housing authority has been created, in order for a city to create one, they must receive the permission of the county housing authority and the county commission. So in nineteen, in the fall of 1974, the Clay County Commission determined that there was a need for affordable housing for minor children, for veterans, and for the aged in Clay County, and decided to create a housing authority. The housing authority was formally formed on February 4th of 1975, and then it started with, it was, it was actually housed here at Clay County in the Planning Department, even for three years after it was formed. And the Planning Department oversaw all operations of the housing authority. And housing authorities have relatively broad powers. A few years ago, Clay County determined to create an EDA. The EDA has similar powers to the housing authority, and so we tried to cooperate and coordinate with that in that creation. I don't know that there's anybody in the state who professes to be an expert on exactly how housing authorities, EDAs, port authorities, all work together and have overlapping but similar powers. Occasionally, the legislatures thought they were going to clean up the statute, and I believe they have thrown up their hands in despair and walked away. But there are both housing powers, there are the power to go in and redevelop blighted areas if it includes a housing project, and there is the ability to levy for those purposes within the area of operation. But with that levy, that must be approved by the Clay County Commission, or whatever the overseeing board is, if it's a city HRA. And just for your information, in Clay County, there's also the Morehead Public Housing Agency, which used to be a housing authority, but under special legislation, its powers were split between the Morehead Public Housing Agency and the Morehead EDA. So the two of them together have the same powers as the Clay County HRA does, basically. And then there's also a Barnesville Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And those are the three that have those powers within Clay County.
Derek, can you also explain, so when you come to us and ask us for ability to put financing?
Yes.
Out there, that for, for Jenny's purpose, that, there's a difference in who gets charged that to, correct?
Correct.
Can you explain that?
It is outside of the levy limits of the county. It is a special district tax, and it shows up on the property tax statements under a separate line item, as the watershed district does as well, as a school district would. And I always consult with the auditor and the county attorney, because I don't profess to be an expert in those areas, but it is outside of the normal levy limits, and it's an additional levy that, it's a percentage of taxable market value.
And if the city of Morehead and the city of Barnesville have their own HRA, then that tax is not applied, or is jurisdictional.
Correct, unless they explicitly invite that tax to apply.
Okay.
Or prove that tax to apply, which has not happened thus far. And at any point, if you have questions, and if I'm speaking in jargon, please stop me and say, "We don't know what you're talking about." But it was originally created, the first few programs that it started to operate were the, it used to be known as Section Eight Voucher Assistance, and its formal name is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And currently, we receive over $2 million per year that comes into the housing authority, and we administer those funds, and up to 360 households can then rent in the private market, paying 30% of their income towards rent, and with that subsidy, paying the difference to the private rental landlord. We think it's a great partnership between the public and private resources, and it's a good infusion of funds for our local property owners. And then the second program they started to run was a rehabilitation program for folks who own their own homes, but who could not afford to make necessary repairs in order to keep them livable. They ran that program from about 1975 through 1993, and then it stopped. Then back in 2008, we decided to try again, because we certainly have seen a need for that throughout the county. And so that's the first time that the HRA actually levied in Clay County, was to use towards that program. And we started with a concentration on units in Dilworth and Glendon, and then in 2010, we did all of Clay County with a focus on Yulin and Hittardell. And then in 2012, this is a grant that will be done at the end of March of this year, we focused on Holly. And that one also includes for rental unit rehabilitation and for commercial property rehabilitation. The housing authority hopes this year to go out to our local communities and talk to them about what their needs are, and to determine if there is a need for this type of funding, either in the communities we've already operated in or in other communities. And I know we've gotten some interest from Saban, and Dilworth and Glendon are, always have an interested dash of folks as well. And it is possible, as we've done in the past, to do a few communities at the same time, to try and spread those resources around. And then we've also started doing a rental rehabilitation program through Minnesota Housing. It's been a tough sell, because the tight market right now, a lot of local landlords don't want to take their units offline in order to rehabilitate them. But we also run a program funded through Minnesota Housing for extremely low-income people, and that is state appropriated funds, and that is for anybody, any place in Clay County, including Morehead, Barnesville, any of the areas. And so those are for folks who have an extremely low income, and we try and cooperate with the city of Morehead, who has a similar program through their funding. And then we own 136 units of housing that are all affordable to the local market. Twelve of those units are located in a complex in Yulin called A.C. Apartments, and that is for folks who are over age 62 or have a disabling condition. It was funded through rural development funds, and then the subsidy for helping people pay their rent is through that project-based Section Eight program, which just means that's the HUD program, funded with a Department of Agriculture loan. And we've been able to keep that full of us as of late. There's a similar building in Dilworth, it's a 60-unit complex, it's called The Estates. It is actually owned by the Elderly Housing Corporation of Clay County, which is a nonprofit entity that was created by the Clay County HRA in 1981, in order to hold that asset. And that is also for folks who are age 62 or older or have a disability. We have a preference for folks who live in Clay County who are in need of assisted living services, because we do have 24-hour assisted living services onsite in that location. We also have congregate meals at that location, and we're happy to say that the MAT bus system has been now picking up at the door of that location as well. We have 24 units of traditional public housing that are located in Dilworth, Holly, and Yulin, and all of our units are three- and four-bedroom twin homes, duplexes, twin homes for families with kids. Then in the city of Morehead, we have gotten permission to operate some programs, and we have two fourplexes in South Morehead that we did in conjunction with the Becker Clay Otter Tail Wilken Adult Mental Health Initiative, for folks who have a serious mental health issue and are in compliance with a doctor's treatment plan. And that's been a very successful program, and we frequently partner with subsidies provided through county programs in conjunction with the state of Minnesota. Then we have two developments that we have built specifically for people who've experienced long-term homelessness. One of those is Gateway Gardens on First Avenue North in Morehead, that was built in 2010, and the housing authority is the developer and the owner and manager of that building. And we do that in partnership with CCRI, who provides onsite support services. That's for single individuals primarily, and it's staffed 24/7. And then we have eight units that we develop, own and manage in South Morehead for families with minor children. In addition to that, right, adjacent to the lat, we have an additional eight units of permanent supportive housing that's owned by a private developer and managed by D.W. Jones, and we make sure that those support services are provided onsite. We also have expanded recently into providing vouchers that are very similar to the Housing Choice voucher program, that have different funding sources, both HUD and the state of Minnesota, that help folks who have experienced homelessness to rent in the private market. And we have 101 of those vouchers. The challenge that folks face is finding an open, affordable rental unit with very tate vacancy rates in the county. But we've been blessed to have wonderful commissioners appointed by the Clay County Commission to the HRA board throughout the years. We've been actively involved, and we've had a long-term staff. We had somebody retire after 32 years last year, our current longest-serving employee has been there for 34 years. We just celebrated a 20th anniversary and a 15th anniversary, and we have a staff of 15. So we thank you all for all of your support through the years, and if you ever have any questions, please feel free to get ahold of us.
Right on time. Questions?
So, do you, what's the percentage of your units that are full? Are they all?
100%.
And what is the, are the longevity of the, I mean, are they usually in there for a good amount of time?
Yes. That would be the unfortunate part, is that almost all of our waiting lists are closed. We have so many people waiting to get housing in Clay County that we first closed our Housing Choice Voucher Section Eight waiting list in 2010, when we had over 800 households on a waiting list for these 360 vouchers. Over 70% of the people that we served, serve are either elderly or disabled. So when folks say, "Well, aren't they going to get a job?", and I'm like, "Well, they're 88 and in a wheelchair." Unlikely that that will be their exit, or most likely to be a nursing home setting or even beyond. And so the folks that we are serving are extremely vulnerable. As I said, at Hoagie Estates, which is our largest building, the only people we've been letting in for the last two or three years have needed assisted living services. And still, we have closed that waiting list as well, because there are just so many people waiting. Yulin has a waiting list. And, not that Yulin isn't wonderful, but you know, some of the smaller rural communities have a harder time filling those units.
Do you have the total number of individuals that are living in your units?
We have 136 units, and they, except for a normal turnover, are all full all the time. I think our overall, our occupancy rate for 2014 was 98.5%, and it was just a matter of turning over the units when somebody left. The only time we have open vouchers, they're not actually open, they've been issued to people who are searching for units in the private market, and they're hard to come by. And so a lot of people are typically taking four months before they can find a unit, even though they're only paying 30% of their rent towards that cost, but to find one that fits within our standards and that is habitable, in decent shape, is tough right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Dara. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda, Early Childhood Initiative 2014 Activity Report. Carolyn Snod. Come on up, Carolyn. What's her name?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carolyn, just for fun. Quick open comment, and then I'm going to turn it over to the expert.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Okay, okay. I asked Carolyn if she'd be willing to come to the board and give you an update on the Early Childhood Initiative work that's been happening in our county. A few years ago, we came to the board and received approval to accept some funds on behalf of the initiative from West Central. And so they've been coming through Clay County Social Services books. I have been signing as the fiscal host, as the county's fiscal host for the grant funds. And this last notice we got, I got to thinking, you know, it's been a while since we've come before the board, and so I wanted to make sure that you're aware that we're serving as the fiscal host, and that I've been signing to receive those funds, and wanted to make sure that you would continue to grant me that permission to do that, as well as receive an update from Carolyn about the project. So, kind of a twofold reason why we're here today, so. Okay?
Thank you. We are very blessed to have our partnership with the West Central Initiative. We are part of a nine-county region that receives dollars for the Early Childhood Initiative. We began our initiative here in Clay County. This is our third year. For the first three years, we are granted $10,000 a year to do that work. After this, the amount will go down to $5,000, but they have given us $10,000 the last three years to do our work, as well as a stipend provided to me to coordinate all of those programmings. The great thing about the Early Childhood Initiative is, is that it addresses the needs of all children in Clay County from birth to age five. Our ultimate goal is to get them ready for school. So while my other work with the Collaborative and the LAC targets specifically at-risk kids, we can provide programming and support for all kids in the county through the ECI. So what I put together for you is just some of the activities that we have completed or that we are ongoing from 2014. We began our process in 2013 by having several community meetings, as well as community perception interviews, where we talked with community members, school officials, and programs across the county, really trying to grasp what the needs are and what our strengths are of our early childhood system. And then from those conversations, we developed the Early Childhood Initiative. We have a wide variety of providers that are representative on our initiative, and we meet every month on the third Friday at 8:30 over at the Family Service Center, and we appreciate being able to utilize that space for our meeting. You guys, of course, are welcome to attend at any time if you would like. But some of the activities that we have coordinated, of course, the Early Childhood Dental Network has been around for a number of years. It actually comes out of the Public Health Department, but it is a kind of a process through the initiative. And so we are now assisting Leslie Woody from the Public Health on some of those activities. Her job responsibilities have changed over the years, and so she's just asked for us to do a little bit of help. But our dental network allows us to bring in providers who can assist children and pregnant women as well with their dental needs. We have a high number of kids who don't have access to dental care or do not have insurance for that. So one month, we do the preventative work, the next month, I'll be doing some of the work that's required, filling cavities and those types of things. Probably the biggest excitement is the tooth varnishing that will now be done at Sanford, because that's really huge, and it's a project that Leslie has worked very hard on over the years, and we very much appreciate the work that she's done. Probably the most, the event that I am the most proud of is our Kid Fest that occurred last April, and it will again in April 11th of this year. We worked in partnership with the Morehead Center Mall, they were just fabulous to work with, to offer a really fun event. We had hoped for 200 kids and ended up with 400, so it was pretty exciting. And we've got a good group of volunteers that are working hard on that project. We're also looking at some of that pre-K alignment work. Two of the goals that we have within that is family engagement, how do we get families involved in helping their kids be ready for school? Some families have a lot of skill in that area, and some families just need to know the importance of language, the importance of reading to our kids, and getting them out into the community and experience in social situations. We're going to be doing a screen by three, a screen by three, excuse me, kind of marketing blitz here, so that families understand that we need to get them in early to get them screened for that process. And the other piece is just that cross-sector work, which I think the initiative is really good at. We are finding that sometimes our childcare centers and schools have not always been talking to each other in the past, and so being able to have the initiative to assist with those communications is really exciting. One of the other projects that we did in 2014 was a grant funding of $93,000, which did not flow through Clay County, it's actually sitting at West Central Initiative, but we're using that to work on the Parent-to-Aware pieces. Unfortunately, we're not in the, we're not on the list, or maybe not on the radar, for early childhood scholarships, but we continue to advocate at the state for that, and West Central Initiative does a lot of lobbying on our behalf to make that happen. But in the meantime, we want to recognize the hard work and the quality of care that we already have in our providers, as well as assist those who want to kind of add more to their program, and so that's what that grant is for. We've had a number of presentations this year. Transportation, as I've brought to you guys a number of times, is also an issue for our young families. We've done some trainings, as well as just offering some agency updates. And then I included some information on just the celebration that we had in December as part of our end of the year, and really wanting the members to share some positive outcomes for that. And they really like the idea of the coalition, being able to come together, to share resources, to learn from each other. There's always just a wealth of information around the table whenever we meet every month, and we really look forward to those program updates and stuff. Some of the activities that we're going to be doing in 2015 will include the Kid Fest again. We also will be having a three-day training event for early childhood providers, starting with the kickoff for our families. We're bringing in Katie Smith, who is a parent educator and was Teacher of the Year in Minnesota in 2011. So she's coming, 2012, she's coming in to do that. We're also going to be working on a project with the Little Free Libraries, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but those are libraries that are put around the community. People donate books to them. Organizations or families and neighborhoods can volunteer to take care of that little library, and children and families can just come to the library, check out, take a book home, they can return it if they want to, or they can keep it, it's just another way to kind of spread the literacy around. We've got a really cool one in the park in Glendon. It's a, I haven't been out there to see it, but it's a stove that's painted red, and so the books are inside the oven, so that's very cool. We are doing outreach to all of our rural schools, as well as in Morehead, because we want to make sure that we're reaching those families as well. So we're going to be doing some activities out there. We haven't identified what those activities will be. And we did receive some grant funding again to do our Parent-to-Aware work, so we'll be developing a program. So those are kind of some of the things that we're, that we're doing, and it fits in really nicely with the other pieces of the work that we're doing within the Collaborative and the LAC.
Thanks, Carolyn. Questions, Kay?
So, the screen by three that you're talking about, do you partner with the school districts that's trying to screen those three-year-olds before kindergarten? Is that what you're talking about, or is that separate?
We will be partnering with the school districts, as well as the home providers, the childcare centers, and then just getting that information out to the public as well. There's just some misperceptions that that screening is a kindergarten entrance screening.
Right.
Right, and we want to just kind of dispel that myth and get kids in early to get them screened, so that if there are, you know, some concerns, we can kind of, you know, move them into some areas where they can receive assistance.
It seems like in the last couple of years, the awareness about that is growing. Four years ago, five years ago, it seemed like people would get to kindergarten and think, "Oh, I didn't do this three-year-old screening." So it is more visible. I think that's the biggest challenge, is making sure it's visible so people can take advantage of it.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Any other questions?
How long have you been doing this now?
(laughing) The early initiative, I've been doing it three years, Kevin, but the other stuff I've been doing it for 17 years.
That's what I was going to say, you've been doing this since, well before I got on here.
I was working at my computer last night at 9:30. My boys came home from, they got to the movies with their dad, and my son said, "Do you ever think that the work you do isn't worth the money you get paid for it, Mom?"
Well, thank you for what you do.
He said, "It isn't about the money, it's about the kids." So I love, I love doing it, so.
Thanks for what you do.
So I'm here.
Early childhood, those issues are. Early childhood, those issues are very important.
Your free libraries, are they working out? I mean, have you experienced any vandalism or anything like that or?
No, they're actually very well taken care of. We only have a few of them in the county. And so, we're hoping to put together actually a building contest that will encourage communities and businesses to build so that we can have more. Right now, we have one in Romke Park. I believe there's one in South Morehead, a couple of them in South Morehead area that are in neighborhoods that...
Oh, yeah. I want to deal with it. I know that I drive by every day and I just wonder whether it's, you know, I hope it's being utilized. It looks like a good deal.
Yeah.
Lady Jerk, just on sidelite, last Tuesday, Carolyn arranged what's called a Spotlight on Mental Health, on children's mental health, rather. And there were 10 different organizations there who spoke and there was networking and things like that. Just one of the things she does and there's all kinds of literature that was there on that. And I'll just mention that on my committee report. So, she's a busy lady.
She was a funny girl.
Thank you.
(laughing)
Anything else? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Do I have permission to continue to sign on behalf of the county for the funds?
Yes, I would, I think we should make that a motion and I would so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both saying same motion carries.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Departmental update, Clay County Sheriff's Department.
Absolutely. Sure. Yeah.
Go look at it.
Good morning.
We have the sheriff, the chief deputy, the jail administrator, and the emergency manager here this morning.
Great. Well, we're here to give you a little update. And as we're going along, if you have questions, just interrupt me and ask you. So, obviously, our biggest issue probably in the next how many years is going to be the jail, but I will let Julie talk about that when she gets her tune. One of the things that I'm really happy and really appreciate the support we got from you was for the school resource officers because we now have them in every school in Clay County. So, of course, Dilworth will be starting next school year, but we still will be working with them because the SRO that we will have there will just, while he's working, stop in and...
And that's a partnership with each school district.
Correct. And it's been working very well and they're very happy. And so, it's been a good thing. Our K9 program, we now have a new canine dog and he's assigned to Corby. He will begin probably sometime in early July of 2015. He is going to be going to his drug class or training coming up. And then after that will be the big one, which is, what, 13 weeks? Something like that. So, that's, hopefully, the dog is going to work out great. It's so far, it's been good and it's nice to have it. Another, one of the issues with this next, or this year, three of the five office staff people will be retiring. So, that's going to be quite a deal and especially when one of them has 40, 40 sub-years? 44? So, there's going to be a lot of people where, you know, it's going to be different around there for a while. So, we also have went into an agreement with a new drug task force. It's called Lakes to River Drug and Violent Crime Task Force. It was redesigned task force and all partners with Detroit Lakes, Breckenridge, Wilken County, as well as the city of Morehead. So, it's been working out good so far and just another new change. Just a little issue after the calls for service this, for 2014, were 12,255. And last year or the year before was 10,390. So, we went up about 2,000 some calls up for service in this last year. Mr. Berg also asked us to talk a little bit about the PIT maneuvers that you've been hearing on the news. Matt's got a video that he's going to show you what it is and...
I had to steal this from YouTube. We had, we've done five of them so far, but all the cases are pending. So, they're not public data yet. But I'll just, this is a news story out of Hillsboro County. I think it's Florida.
(inaudible) chat segment today. We're heading back to the lower county Sheriff's Office Training. That's a little, we're going to show you something called the PIT maneuver. Technical term for that is precision immobilization technique. PIT maneuver is how to stop bad guys. Not that they crash, but a general... We wanted you to see it happening before we break it down. They call this the PIT maneuver. It's when law enforcement is in pursuit and has to stop somebody. A PIT maneuver is a technique used to stop a pursuit. You know, whenever we engage in a pursuit and we scrutinize whatever we do because of the consequences and the safety issues to not only the bad guy, the deputies and in the public, most importantly, but our ultimate goal is to stop that pursuit. When we actually have to start one as quickly as possible. And as you saw today, it stops the pursuit. I'm in the front car. One of the bad guys being chased. Stu Shannon is doing the driving. I'm in the passenger seat. Now, in the good guy car, Corporal Matt Luck is driving. And the doctor Jason Burr is in the passenger seat. What amazes me about the PIT maneuver is how if you didn't know you were being chased, you wouldn't feel it. Like, I started spinning. I didn't even notice the chase was on, that we had been hit from behind. Tap, rip. It's that light of a hit. Now, this isn't dramatic TV shows starting hot stuff. No crashing. I'll be honest with you. I didn't know the person was coming. I didn't even feel it. I didn't know we were hit until we started spinning. And that's the point of it.
That's, that's the point of it.
It definitely, even it doesn't take crashing into somebody. And that's, that's where we need to address this law enforcement and technology. But back in the days when we had these high-speed pursuits and you saw people getting killed left and right, often we'd go and all force it. Now, like I said, just try not to pursue. But we have to because that's our job is to catch bad guys. It's to stop as quickly, quickly and safely as we, as we can. One more thing before we go. That training car I made in the passenger door doesn't open. It makes it safer for training. It makes it harder to get out. This is 55. There's no way to do this gracefully, is there?
That's why, again, we apologize not to be able to show our R5's successful attempts, but that really does break it down pretty well.
If you guys wish to, after it's been in court, we could definitely come back and just show you from the camera. So...
Do you end up with much damage to the vehicle?
A couple of times we have, yes. It all depends. But when, one of the things we're going to be doing is buying some different kinds of bumpers that will alleviate some of the damage. So, but it is just another tool in pursuits like the stop sticks. We begin using it in 2013. We trained two deputies. 2014, we trained six more deputies. The training will continue. The training's at Brainerd. It's a one-day class. It's $415 per deputy and they use their own vehicles. Again, we've used it five times, all successful in ending the pursuits with nobody getting hurt. Again, we, like I said, we're going to be purchasing the pit push bumpers to reduce the squad damage. And many different factors considered, including public safety, risk, continue or discontinue, stop stick availability, and obviously the speed of the suspect. But we do, when somebody is in a pursuit, there's always going to be a supervisor listening and at some point we'll maybe just shut it down. That's, you know, public safety is by almost the most important. So, any questions for me?
For the sheriff?
Next. Okay. We continue to plan for the new jail in LAC. We actually have two committees that are going. We have a finance committee and a jail design committee. We are using a lot of the information that we developed in 2008 and '09 when we had the jail study. Just yesterday, we had a planning committee for jail design and we had the five options that were presented to us back in '08 that we've narrowed down to two. This committee will determine the location of the jail, the size, and what type of design. We are moving forward, doing some site visits, hopefully within the next month. One of the things we will be doing also coming up pretty soon is we renew our contract of bed space with Tri-County Community Corrections. Last year, we started that, that contract. And what it is, is that they have agreed to take up so many of our inmates and they will do our transports, transports for us twice a week. It's been very successful. We're very happy with the agreement we have, but we do need to renew that come spring. And we probably will increase the number of beds we would like from them. One of the problems we're seeing with Tri-County is they have turned us away. We've had more inmates that we needed to ship. They are starting to fill up themselves. They've taken contracts from the U.S. Marshals and the Department of Corrections. So, we are starting to utilize Douglas County, which is in Alexandria. It's a little bit farther away for us, for us. But we also use Wilken County. It's getting to be more common for us to call them and ask them for bed space, particularly for females, and they, they're turning us down. We had that happening to us again yesterday. Just to give you an idea of what our numbers are right now, we have 77 in the jail and 32 inmates shipped out. So, we only have 60 beds in the main jail. We can only use approximately 45 of those. And then our annex has 30 beds. So, we have a total of 90 beds. We have, we have shipped this morning and we will have to ship again probably this afternoon to get us under compliance.
Can you tell me again what we're spending to ship inmates out a year?
Sure. In Tri-County, we're paying approximately $51 a day and that does include the transports. Wilken County...
Her inmate, sorry. Right?
Her inmate, yep. And for Wilken County, it's $55. And Douglas County is giving us a $50 a day rate. Another thing we are working on this spring will be we're upgrading our security equipment at the jail. It, it is starting to get some wear and tear. Our touchscreen has had some issues. Basically, what it'll do is separate the two systems from the CAS or from the courthouse to the jail. And so, it'll handle all of our door controls. It's a computer basically that needs to be replaced. It's the original computer from 1997 is running the main control. So, it's obviously well overdue. The other thing we are working on at the jail is we have the Clay County Church Ministry that's recently started. And with this church ministry group, they are going to help us expand our RAP program, which is our reentry program. And some of the things they're going to offer us is a peer assistance group for post-incarceration. Some of the members of that group are going to go through some training in CAS County for their mentoring program over there. And once they've completed that, we're going to coordinate with our RAP officer so that we can hook up mentors with inmates in the RAP program before they even leave the jail so that when they leave here, they have a stable peer group that they can go to. And hopefully, by providing some of these services, we'll see a reduction in when they're returning back to the jail. That's pretty much all I have for the jail.
Questions for Julie?
We'll be giving more of an update too on yesterday's meeting a little bit.
Thanks, Julie. Brian, emergency management.
I just want to, one before I start, the emergency manager, so I have the armor system. We're in the process. We have a contractor. He's started by March. He told us by March that we'll have a preliminary amount of money that we're going to have to spend to get to the armor system. And then in May, middle of May, the plan will be completed. By that time, either we'll have meetings with you before that or when the plan is done and then we'll bring the options back to you guys and girls.
Do you have a timeline that this should be done in or?
You mean for the plan?
No, for the installation and up and running.
Installation. Well, of course, it's going to be totally up to you. You know, the, we're looking at, you know, at least a year or two years away. For sure not this year. Maybe not next year. But again, we're going to have to find out how much it's going to cost and how we can implement it. And it will have different options than that plan. So, we'll be able to take a look at it. Again, remember it involves all the fire departments, all EMS, Red River Dispatch and all of them.
There'll be grant money for some of it.
The infrastructure, yes, there will be grant money. The state of Minnesota ECN has grants available for the infrastructure. That means connectivity to dispatch. If we have to do some enhancements somewhere within the county, they'll pay 40 to 45% of that. Now, the mobiles and portables, which are the equipment, they will not pay for any of that. There's also fire grants available. Fire Association will be applying next year for a fire grant to try to get covered of their radio equipment.
Is there internal service fund to pay for the cost of some of that?
Well, it's, it would be all new, Mr. Jerkman. So, I, that's why I asked the question in terms of implementation because, you know, I think the sooner we can gather those costs of what it's, the actual cash outlay from Clay County is going to be, we can incorporate it into our next five-year capital improvement plan. You know, and I'd hate to see us move forward with that capital improvement plan without this component as part of it because that's, I think it's still going to be significant local dollars.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, Brian, that's important.
So, you're thinking which ones will go?
Okay, emergency management.
Okay. Just got a review of last year. We got four new sirens. One in Yulin hit it off Glendon at Barnesville Fairgrounds last year, paid by Homeland Security Grant. And Yulin is the only one that's kind of upset. They're so used to that 12 o'clock whistle and that 9:00 PM whistle. They don't get that anymore. But that's all completed and that's tested. All, it's good to go. The CCUS, CCUSR, it's Clay County Unified School Response. I've been on that committee for many years. This year, we developed a template for all school emergency operations plan. We're going to bring it back out to all the schools. Hopefully, they all adopt it. Now, we're talking all CAS and Clay County schools. Basically, it just brings us all into more formality of how to run any kind of emergency in any school system. Team CERT program, we had, we only hit it all again last year. They live it up there. It's just a great benefit for the kids and the community itself. Last year, we dealt with the propane shortage and the gas exploding up in Canada. So, that sounds like that's pretty much taken care of itself. Now, of course, we got a nice winter, so that helps too. We finished integrating the public alert warning system, the IPoS. Was completed and signed off, the 1st of January, actually, it was signed off. It's completely usable right now. And a part of that was the code red updated to the new platform. We had to do that to get the IPoS system within there. Clay County is part of the oil transportation study. Completed that, give some information to the legislators so they can deal with it this year. First Nat, Clay County is selected as one of the outstate, I should say, out of the metro area, as one of the test areas for the First Nat system. We also went through the Boa threat. God, that's going to be over with, I hope. We had a review by National Weather Service on flood stages, including the Red River and all of Buffalo. It really did not change. The only thing is the lower part, we moved it up, bottom foot. So, that, it's not quite official yet. Still got to go through a lot of reviews from the federal government, but I think that's where it's going to go. The top end is going to be basically the same. Bottom end will be, that'll change. So, we really don't see any, you know, at the Buffalo River at eight feet, which is flood stage, we really don't see any activity whatsoever. So, that will get moved up. Last year, the state legislation passed the emergency management funding where they have a state statute basically now with a certain amount of money. In case we get a federal disaster, that money is available there, paid at 25% if we have a federal disaster. So, they don't have to have a special exception or anything like that. That money is also available for counties or cities that if we don't get a federal disaster, that money will cover some of the expenses. Some of the trainings that we had in Clay County last year, we had BNSF, Rail Safety and Holly last year. We also had them in Dilworth. And then they, they gave four classes actually in Fargo for a lot of first responders. So, we had two Skyworm classes last year. We had New Star Training, which is the big chemical plant in Morehead. We had training with all first responders out there and also had the trailer facilities. We have NIMs courses again. I think, have you taken any NIMs courses?
No.
Oh, you'll have to.
Yep.
I'll get with you later and make sure which one I have to take. Pipeline safety courses, last year was in DL. This year is going to be in Morehead. We brought in the EMI. We brought in the EMI course which is a audit, actually they're from all over, but it's a FEMA course out of Maryland. We brought them in last August, develop an emergency operation plan again for schools. We have like thirty-five people and we have good reps from a lot of different schools. Some of the exercises we had last year, we had evacuation and unification of the elementary school in Moorhead and we had a regional shelter exercise in Moorhead and then we had several railroad response tabletop exercise and then we had several regional communication exercises, so we were a little busy.
Thanks Brian. Questions for Brian?
I have a question and a comment, I'll start with my comment. I know that, I see some of the things that come out there from your department through social media and one of the areas that I don't think we can overemphasize is the signing up of Code Red and I think, you know, I think that would be another good useful tool to use, social media to remind people. And not only that, but there's some people who may think that they're signed up for Code Red and they're not and so how do they, how can one go about to check to make sure that they're still signed up? I know I signed up for it on my cellphone, I got a lot of things at one time, now I haven't got anything. Either it's been really quiet for a long time or I'm no longer signed up.
I think you're quiet.
Okay, okay, so, but I still think it would be really good especially coming into tornado season and all that kind of stuff.
Anything else?
One other question on that pit remover, do we recover, recoup any costs like if there's damage to our cars? There's no way to recover costs from the?
We haven't in the past, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, if we could get the judge to give us some restitution, but generally that doesn't happen if they get charged and sentenced.
If they have insurance on their car, sometimes they, our MCTI will mitigate that, but that insurance companies will-
Will subjugate it.
Yeah, there is some, but it's very rare. Somebody just stole a car speeding, usually they won't have insurance in their car.
They didn't stop off to take insurance?
No.
Well, they called them before they took the car.
Yeah.
Tells you have a thirty-day leeway on that.
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
I'll keep you guys updated now.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would be good Brian, thank you.
Thank you. Department update, building manager, Georgia, come on up Georgia.
I'm here, Georgia.
You want to take a break for a minute?
Yeah, just a minute.
Okay. Take just a couple minute break here. Next item is the departmental update by our building manager, Georgia Bodry. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I just put together, I printed a updated sheet of our recent tenants, we just recently are at a hundred percent occupancy, we were yesterday and because one of the tenants grew to big space, we're just have a small vacancy, we have about two hundred and forty-two square feet that's available now on the fourth floor, but Solutions just recently moved in, like I said yesterday, and they took the Drake Counseling space that was vacated as of December. So actually overall the last year to two years, we've been almost at a hundred percent occupancy, we've maybe been short a day, two here or there, maybe a half a month as people are moving in and out, but the occupancy rate has been really good the last couple of years. Our rental rates are still the same, I do an annual comparison which is somewhat hard to do because we can maybe compare with the Center Mall, we used to be able to compare with the Townsite Center, but the space isn't similar to like the type that we're renting, they're looking at brand-new space and they're looking at twenty-four dollars a square foot, thirty dollars a square foot plus utilities plus parking. Our current rates are on, the first floor is twelve seventy-five and the upper floors, second through fifth are at eleven seventy-five and that includes all utilities, custodial, parking, and then access to our meeting rooms and services and the mailroom. The other department that I oversee is the mailroom at the Family Service Center, the mailroom provides copying services, mail service, outgoing mail and shredding, but as we all work towards going paperless, the copying has reduced and so we've been lucky and fortunate enough to work with Social Services, so we contract the two job share employees that do work in there, they work every other week, Monday through Friday, and four of the hours of the day they contract out their services for Social Services. So when there was Social Services, they'll be filing or doing mail with them and then also that funding is reimbursed for four hours of the day for their services that they provide. We recently, just yesterday, started the elevator project, I think Brian maybe forwarded the email out to everyone that they got started, last night they did shut it down, so we were without elevator service and we did send a notice out for, we said projected two hours and I talked to him this morning, he said it was actually about fifteen minutes, so it all went well and one of the cars is working today and that will remain in service now until they work on the other one, get the other one going and then it will swap over. The estimated completion date is May, we're hoping that'll stay on target, but we'll see what happens. The other lease agreements we have are also out at the North Highway Shed at Motor Vehicle, we lease out space to driver's license testing, their current rate adjusted to twelve seventy-five, they were at seven fifty a square foot prior to the remodeling and with the remodeling expense, we did increase that to twelve seventy-five and they signed, agreed to a five-year lease. We also rent out bus storage at the North Shed and the bus storage is with Lakes and Prairies, Productive Alternatives and then the Solid Waste Department actually leases space out there too and we get six thousand dollars from each of those agencies, or two hundred and fifty dollars for a bus. Part of undermined department falls the Fleet Department, we have eleven Fleet vehicles, five of the eleven vehicles are assigned to individual departments, the assessors have two, probation has two and then motor vehicle has one and then the remainder of the six are available for people to lease out for travel. We just this year recently participated in the lease program, we did lease two of the vehicles from Enterprise, so far so good. We also participated in their gas program and their maintenance program and then recently we went into an agreement with the Holiday Station out on Thirty-Fourth Street for washing the vehicles. We didn't have, we were going to M&amp;H for a while, but this actually works out a little bit better because they just put a chip in the windshield of the vehicle and anyone who's driving it on their way back when they get gas, they can actually wash the vehicle or otherwise we had to make a special trip to M&amp;H and maintenance was involved in that. We have the, I oversee the custodial services, we currently have seven rosters, three part-timers and five full-timers and they provide the custodial services for all of the campus buildings here and motor vehicle. So far that seems to be going well, we've had some turnover in staff, but what has really improved for our services and I think it's been tremendous and hopefully we're getting good feedback on it is our daytime custodian at the Family Service Center. We went many years without any custodial services during the day and that's a big building, it gets a lot of usage and if something was created in the morning, we would call upon maintenance to help us, but it helps to have daytime cleaning during the day. With the custodial services, we did do some changes, we looked at trying to make sure each building was using the same product, tried to maintain consistency. For a while there, we had each building ordering their own supplies and kind of, so we minimized the orders and at this point we now just recently changed to a dilution system where we mix it with the water and everyone's using the same system and we bid that out. We're looking at doing the same type of a service for the hand wash to reduce our expenses and also the paper products, so hopefully we'll get that done this year. I worked pretty close with Joe in building maintenance, Joe oversees the building maintenance staff and I have the custodial staff, but on a lot of things we work together on the budget, the capital plan and then assigning of the spice works ticket, Joe normally assigns them, but I'll cover in his absence. I serve on the safety committee for the Clay County as a whole, but we also created a safety committee at the Family Service Center and that's grown into not just safety but more of a safety tenant committee where we meet quarterly and they can bring other issues regarding the building, not just specific to safety. Part of our safety plan at the Family Service Center is we installed overhead speakers for announcing, prior to doing that, we only had communication via email to our county ten, to our county departments. Once we went with the overheads, then we have email, our phone system has also helped create some communication and then the overhead speakers. We've implemented and we've done it twice now, last year we did evacuation drills, we started with the fifth floor, we evacuated the whole fifth floor and got them out of the building should a disaster occur and we've done the fourth floor and now in March we're looking at combining the second and third floor. It's been a good experience to test our speakers and then just to give people an idea, hopefully we won't need it, but should we need it, they'll know how to respond and where to go. We always have kind of ongoing and again I'm working with Joe on that carpet and paint, we still have some carpeted areas that are from nineteen ninety-four that need some replacing and we're looking on doing that here fairly soon in the next month or so. The Family Service Center lobby and chairs, we had a little subcommittee, we're looking at still reviewing that, but we're trying to go at that slowly and wait till we get some funding, but maybe we can work on some chairs and tables this year to at least get it a little updated. The original chairs are in there from ninety-four and they're cloth chairs and they're not in the best of shape and as far as cleaning, they're a little beyond that. That's really about it on a day-to-day, it's pretty much just responding to calls and-
Thanks Georgia, any questions?
I have a question on the rent rates, have we remained pretty balanced in that, has it been steady? When was the last time we changed that?
We haven't had an increase for seven years and we're actually proposing to do a fifty cent increase. I did send the notice out this year, so we're looking at a fifty cent increase for sixteen. What we do to compare with that, we look at our utilities expenses and our expenses for custodial and things like that.
Any other questions? Brian, Mr. Chair, if I just may add, I think Georgia's done just a terrific job supervising the janitorial staff. We used to get ongoing complaints, it was constant of the cleanliness, especially from the Family Service Building and in fact I asked Rhonda and Kathy just the other day about how it had been going because I just haven't been getting complaints. When I first got it, there was just continuous daily complaints and now it's been just very quiet. I just mean I won't get some this afternoon, but it's been really, really improved and it's because of closer supervision and selection and different things of the employees who've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Good to hear, good work Georgia, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, committee report, Swain.
Yes, Mr. Chair, on Tuesday, January twenty-seventh, Spotlight on Children's Mental Health, presentation by the following presenters along with collaboration among these groups, Children's Consultation Network, Prairie St. John's, Rule Seventy-Nine Case Management for Clay County Social Services, the Mobile Crisis Unit, Minnesota State University Moorhead Counseling Center, the Village Family Services Center, Wraparound Program, Solutions Behavioral Health, the Reach Program and the Local Advisory Council for Adult Mental Health. All of these groups spoke, had different things to say, there's networking among groups and it was very, very good and I do have several items here if anybody's interested, I'll have them here after and that's all I have.
Thank you. Frank?
Tuesday and Thursday I attended two retirements for Kathy Richards over at University of Minnesota Extension, I know at the Soil and Water Conservation District Karen Carl's who also retired, well, retired last week, so they have retirement, I mean, I attended those. Thursday night Metro Coog held a meeting or session of Clay County Harkland Trail which I participated in and helped talk to people and stuff like that and it was very interesting, over fifty people that attended that thing and gave me a different view of the Harkland Trail, I didn't really realize that there was that many people that are interested in that thing, you know, and it just, there was people from Fargo there that are interested and they were concerned that North Dakota's not doing much with trails and stuff like that, they're utilizing Minnesota trails and they were very interested in this Harkland Trail coming in, so there's some Fargo people there. There was landowners there and I guess I thought there'd be resentment from landowners going across their land or something like that for a trail, but the ones I talked to were for the trail, you know, so that was very encouraging and I guess the rest of the people were pretty much path users, you know, that I talked to, they came there to see where the, where the trail is going to go, you know, they're so interested in it, they're all ready for it, they want it to happen and stuff like that, so it was a good, it was a good meeting, good session and found out a lot of, I mean, a lot of people interested in that and I know Wayne attended the one, oh, I mean Wayne, excuse me, Grant attended the one on Holly, I'm sure you reported that too, but like I said, it was a good turnout. Yesterday we had MRCC video, whatever you call, webinar, whatever you call that to hear at-
ITV.
ITV, good word, okay. There's a lot of stuff, there's MRCC that they're working on, as far as they're looking at, I'm trying to come up with, they're looking at audits, how do they conduct the audits, you know, I know Becker County is very concerned about whether audits should be conducted by the state or whether you can hire-
Independent audit.
Independent audit and Becker County showed where they're almost saving forty thousand dollars doing it independently, you know, and I guess that's one of the things they're going to pursue in pursuing that. Transportation funding was brought up, Nurse at Home Committee to set up to look into home care issues, wind energy tax is another important thing they looked at, you know, they're looking at these levy limits coming on and if we get a wind energy tax, they're gonna, we can't, that's going to go against our levy limits, you know, and so it's almost like if we get wind energy tax money, we're going to lose money, I mean, that's part of the money that we can collect, you know, and it's just, and we, I think we're looking at as additional income, you know, whereas actually it would, it'd be a break-even thing if we get wind energy tax, our levy limits are reduced and so, and grant republiance and other things too.
Jenny?
Last week I attended the AMC training for newly elected government officials, Tuesday or Wednesday and Thursday, I appreciate the opportunity to network with elected officials from our eighty-seven counties. Overall, it was a fantastic program and learned a lot and met some new people.
That's it?
Concludes my report.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, I had, last Tuesday afternoon, we had a executive committee meeting of our Regional Juvenile Detention Group and the primary reason for that meeting was discussing, we're having some of the same issues we're having in the juvenile centers we're having in the jail and it's that we're getting to capacity and so we're, we had some discussions there to potentially look at how we can redo some of our facility primarily on the second floor.
Right, second floor.
Yes. To maybe allow us some additional space. It's not an urgent issue right now, but we wanted to stay ahead of it and make sure that we come up with a plan for the future. As we brought CAS County in as a member, we want to make sure that we can provide all of the needs for all of our members. The following day, we had our Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Committee Advisory Meeting in Purim and it was nice to have Commissioner Whalen there, he got to sit in the meeting and he can maybe talk a little bit about the tour that he took afterwards, but the main issue or main concern that we've had over the last couple of meetings there was the new burner or new boiler that's there is not performing to capacity in terms of its ability to generate steam and of course the steam becomes the revenue generator for the facility which has an impact on the budget, so if you're not selling as much steam because it's not producing, you're underperforming and so we've got issues with the contractors who guaranteed a certain level of steam production and it's not meeting that level, so that contract isn't done, the final payment to the contractor hasn't been made, so that, we're going to watch that very closely, the entire board was very upset with that report. Then yesterday, we did have our jail facilities committee meeting and it was a good meeting. As Julie talked about this morning, we had gone over five options that were originally looked at back eight years ago when we were first working on this project and of those five options, three of them today would not even meet the current criteria that we'd have to have for a current facility. So three of the five options eight years ago would not have worked today. So obviously we've eliminated- So, obviously, we've eliminated, yesterday, we eliminated those three options for consideration. We have, there's two options out there right now and we're still, we're not closing the door to other options. But one option would be to, has a full capacity where it would put us into many years in the future. And the other option is the same except it would be an add-on pods as needed, so, but we'll continue to work on that. And that was a good meeting. We did get some information or some, we need to have some soil borings done on our property to make sure that whatever we construct, we can handle it. And so, I've asked our administrator to bring that before the board, hopefully by next week. I don't think we should wait on that. As we move forward with plans, we, it's hard to move forward with plans if we don't have, if we don't know that the, the ground can support what we wanna do. So, so, we can probably look at seeing that next week on our agenda for approval to spend the necessary funds to do that. Oh, then one last thing on that. When, a couple of weeks ago, when Commissioner Wayland and I went and spoke before the Word Business Association regarding the jail, there was a member there who afterwards contacted me and said that he had contacted MCAM and then MCAM is interested in doing a promotional video on our current jail so that the public can see its condition. And so, we talked a little bit about our committee meeting yesterday and not only would I like to have that done so that the public can see how outdated and, and how awful it is really in comparison to the other jails. And at the same time, to show a new facility with the new design and new way of approaching for the indirect type of service that we have. And a good place to go to show that would be Cass County's jail. You'd see a night and day difference in those facilities, old versus new. And I think that would, as we move forward and discussing this major project with, with our county citizens, it would be important for them to all be able to see that. And we might be able to talk with the public access channels about doing it, maybe getting a narrative done and showing that on our public access channels as well. So, that's, we'll be working on that. I wanna give the information to Brian and we'll be working on that along with Julie to try to get that video established.
Mr. Chair, would there be expenses involved in that? If so, I think it would be wise to spend it.
Yeah, potent, potentially, potentially, we'll probably look at seeing if they want something for, for the production time. In terms of the time that it's, it's shown on the public access channel, I wouldn't think there's any...
Preparation.
Yeah, there could be some, there's, but we need to be willing to...
It'll be well worth it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It would probably also be wise to have a link on our website on the internet.
Yeah, once, once we get that video, it's, and it's something that we wanna be able to take as we move forward and, and the public's gonna wanna start requesting. I, I can, I can think of service clubs, for example, wanting to have presentations made to them. And it certainly is always good to do those types of things. And then to be able to have that, that video would be really nice to, I, I can't imagine this thing being more than a five or 10-minute piece, you know, that would, that would show this all. But that's kinda where we at. Commissioner Wayland might have some additional things on the jail, but...
Okay. Yeah, last week, I had the, I went to the Harkland Trail Public Meeting in Holly and it was, let's see, that was Tuesday night. It was well-attended. I spoke, I, I think I had the same experience, Frank, you had most, I spoke to a lot of landowners and overall, there were some issues that were concerned, but overall, I'd say everybody was pretty positive about it. And I'd say at any given time, there were probably 50, 60, 70 people that were attending and it was an open house, so there were people coming and going the entire time. I had attended the solid, the Prairie, or the solid waste meeting in Purim and it really was an eye-opener to see, you know, I got a tour of the facility after our meeting and I think it would be really helpful since we're partners in that now, that if every, all the commissioners, if we had a tour of that facility, it's, it's pretty amazing to see what's, what they actually do with their garbage. You see it on, you know, firsthand basis, you know. You throw something in your dumpster garbage can and you don't know what happens to it. It's pretty interesting to see what, what, what happens now.
It's also what we're kinda trying to work for at Clay County.
Yeah, part of it is what, you know, what, what we're looking at, at doing here. So, it's, it's, I, I think it would be well worth the time to, to set up a tour for those of us who haven't seen it. Let's see, I had the jail design committee, Kevin already talked about our second meeting and I think we've really made a lot of progress, you know. You know, a lot of times, these things kinda bog down, but we're, we're moving fairly fast and, and I know Kevin was talking to Brian about that earlier, about probably moving up our schedule here because, as things are moving along pretty well. And the bottom line is, we do need a new jail and there aren't any alternatives to that. So, probably with the financial situation the way it is now for dealing with public money, we're probably better off doing it sooner than later.
Instead of paying other counties.
Instead of paying, and, and we're, we're spending a tremendous amount of money, which is just continuing to go up, so.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I can, to comment on that, and when I talk to Brian, it's, we had, we had a kind of a long-range goal of, of trying to be under construction in four years. If we know that we need this facility, we have a lot of capable people that can help us get to what we need in design. I, I really think that we should be able to move that up significantly in terms of time for construction to begin. That only is gonna ultimately save us a lot of money. So, if, if we could, for example, if we could start construction in two and a half years versus four years, it's gonna save a significant amount of money. And, and we just need to look at that because we know we have to do it. There's no question that Clay County's gonna need a new jail, so.
It's not an option, it's a necessity. So, yeah, I think, and, and the committee is very engaged and I think wants to see this move as quickly as possible, so. I had Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus yesterday. Frank already spoke of that, but a lot of issues going on there. There was a lot of discuss, you know, transportation is probably our number one priority this year, but a lot of the counties that are involved in MRCC are interested in being able to opt out of the, the state audit. So, there was a lot of discussion about that. I think there, there's a bill or now, or, or one that's going to be introduced that would allow counties with 65,000 or less population to opt out of having the state do the audit if they want. But it really probably doesn't impact us. I don't, we, we may be at that now or we're, we're close if we're not at 65,000, so it may not affect us even if that bill does pass, so. Talk about the state general tax, a lot of issues in rural areas about that where they have seasonal, a lot of seasonal business and the impact that it's having on them. And that was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You two, both Commissioner Campbell and Wayland have reported on the juvenile detention discussion that we had and Commissioner Campbell referenced the second floor. There was some good planning that went on there because the secure unit is up on third floor, but the second unit is non-secure right now. Body was designed so that it can be converted to secure quite reasonably and then possibly move the non-secure elsewhere. So, Steve is looking into that somewhat. So, that was part of the discussion. It's really nice, I shouldn't say it's nice, not when you're talking about confinement and costs, but the juvenile center was struggling a few years ago to keep the doors open and, and they've really done some positive things as we've reported on in the past. And it's a 10-county facility. Now, it reaches across the board, so it's, it's between two states and it's, they've just really done well over there. And still looking forward, looking, forward-thinking in regards to how they can be of more service. Their, their programs are just excellent and it's just really done well. We had some discussion there and I and Rhonda visited about the on-call of, of their social workers. We had some discussion at our last pick meeting, so we followed up a little bit on that and pursuing some, some thoughts there. I met with Julie and Justin in reference to the jail construction meeting to, to get some things moving in regards to that, yes. And I think we had a real productive meeting yesterday. I was pleased with it as well. I had some personnel evaluations again this last week. I met with the highway department yesterday morning with their management, with, with Dave and, and Nathan and Brian to talk about some, some, just some management issues and how the winter's going and different things. So, that went well. Had the jail committee meeting yesterday, that's all I've been reported on, just, there's, boy, a lot of good thoughts and a lot of things going on there. Lot of need is expressed and that's a good thing. I did receive about four contacts last week in that, in reference to the video tour that we have on our sites. And the, the company called CGI Communications, four years ago, you guys endorsed that to have on our, on our website and then it was renewed this year. I don't think four years ago, we received much negative feedback, but this last week, I received a couple of negative comments. Some of them were just checking it out and, and so, Mark and I contacted the company yesterday morning quite early and, and expressed the concerns that I had gotten from the businesses that maybe they were being a little bit strong-armed on their advertising tactics or solicitation for advertising on that. And I guess we, we wanna be reassured that the company is, is being honest, that they are doing this basically with our endorsement, but they are not county employees and they're not doing it for us necessarily. I think they have a very professional product out there and they are offering to the businesses to be associated with it for advertising purposes and they should not feel intimidated or committed. And that was some of the calls that I had received, that, well, they felt almost guilty that they weren't supporting this because it was, they let themselves be known as a county entity and, and so, we had a good, strong conversation with them yesterday about that. And I, the reason why I tell you that, in case you've received any of the feedback or anything as well. So, there was a letter in there from me as it was four years ago from VJ when, when they, they sponsored us, so they, they felt the need to call me on it, which is fine. So, hopefully, we got that settled down. And we've started working on the revenues to expenditures for 2014. We're, we're past the end of the year and, and Lori's gathering all the information on that. She's given me some preliminary information and I'll work with the departments to, to make sure of their expenditures and, and we'll report on that when we get that all put together too. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That does it.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just clarify something on this per diem sheet that was just handed out. As an example, per diem deadline for March is March 2nd and that would show up on the March 6th payroll. Is that correct? So, if we turned our per diems in on March 3rd, which would be the Tuesday, it wouldn't show up until April. Is that correct? Is there any reason why, as commissioners, we could not, if we individually wanted to turn it in on Monday?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
And you could also, I just heard from Mike, you could also email them in as well.
I wouldn't know how to do that. I'll just bring it in. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have. Anything else? We're adjourned.